I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight and would like to start out our meeting as we sit a moment of silence but also for the tragic events that happened in Charleston and the individuals who lost their lives, that we let those people and that community know that they're in our thoughts and our prayers and that when we see something like that happen, that we see that that's not just something that affects our country but it affects all of our communities and all of our families and that's something that we'll continue to keep in our prayers. We'll move to the consent agenda.
Move for approval, consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Moving to third readings, consider for amendments to ordinance 15035, the appropriation ordinance.
Mayor, members of council, your packet, I've got a letter that outline several budget corrections. Let me touch on the highlights of that very quickly, I'll be glad to answer any questions when I finish up through my list. The city manager's budget on page sixty-six, I'm requesting fifty thousand dollars that would fund the costs related to the analysis of the potential merger of Murfreesboro Electric and Middle Tennessee Electric. All of that happened after the budget was submitted, so I think we probably need to add some money for the study and outside counsel. In both the IT budget and the police budget, there were items identified that they wanted to include in the upcoming budget. Because the city has done very well this year, we asked both Mr. Lilly and Chief Chrisman to try to acquire those items out of this year's budget so we could avoid the expense next year. However, the items that I had listed, they weren't able to get by June the thirtieth, which means we now need to put them back in the budget in the IT department. It is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the police department, I believe it was seventy-eight thousand dollars. The engineering department also saw a senior public works inspector submit his retirement papers. We'll need to backfill that position while he's out on retirement and that would cause an increase of a little over sixty-seven thousand dollars. Well, while some of the departments weren't able to purchase things, Mr. Wilkins in the golf course was, so we're able to take out thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars from the golf budget. So mayor, that would summarize the changes to the proposed budget and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you have these amendments. Any questions? Okay, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15035, as amended, the appropriations.
Do we need to vote on the amendment?
Okay. We'll need a motion on the amendments.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll now consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15035, as amended, the appropriations ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15037, amending the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll move to new business, consider for adoption Resolution 15R seventeen, approving the budget of the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
So moved.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for adoption Resolution 15R eighteen, approving the budget of the Stormwater Utility Management Fund for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Move for adoption. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for adoption Resolution 15R twenty, approving the budget of the Evergreen Cemetery for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for adoption Resolution 15R nineteen, approving the budget of the Murfreesboro City Schools for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, which budget includes the general purpose fund, the extended school program fund, the federal and state programs fund, the cafeteria fund, and the debt service fund.
Move for adoption.
Second. Motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for adoption Resolution 15R twenty-six, amending the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budgets for the Murfreesboro City Schools.
Move for adoption.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll now conduct a public hearing and consider for approval of certificate of compliance for Keisha Patel and Harris Patel at the Wine Cellar, twenty-two oh six Memorial Boulevard.
This is an application for a new location. Currently, there is a home that will be demolished on this property. This is out near the Walmart on Memorial and the distance requirements between schools and churches are not in question. That's why we're going to go ahead and bring this before you before there's an actual building constructed. Usually, we have to do a corner-to-corner measurement if there's any question in distance, but this time, no matter where they put it on the property, there would not be a question of there being a violation of our distance requirement. So you would need to have a public hearing and then after that, if you, when you close it, you can consider it and from there, that applicant would then start the process with the state.
Okay. Before we open the public hearing, we'll remind you of our rules, which is state your name and your address into the microphone. Address all your comments to the city council. We'll do our best to get those questions answered. You have three minutes if you're speaking as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group, and we allow you to speak one time, please. All right. We'll now consider the public hearing open. Those wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing no comments, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll consider a motion for this certificate of, or excuse me, for a consider approval for the certificate of compliance.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Pursuant to Resolution 15OZR thirty-three, adopted by the city council on May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately one point four acres located at fifteen oh eight East Main Street from residential multifamily sixteen RM sixteen district to commercial fringe CF district and approximately point four seven acres located at fifteen twelve East Main Street from single-family residential fifteen RS fifteen district to commercial fringe CF district. Mr. Donnie Dement, applicant two thousand fifteen dash four oh nine, notice that said public hearing was published in the June fifth, two thousand fifteen issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Baughn.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland. Good evening, members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is a rezoning request at the southeast corner of the intersection of East Main Street and South Baird Lane. It consists of two parcels, both owned by Mr. Dement. The first parcel, which is directly on the corner of that intersection, is the larger parcel, one point four acres, is currently zoned RM sixteen and it contains a single-family residence, vacant single-family residence. The smaller parcel is point four seven acres and it's currently zoned RS fifteen and contains Mr. Dement's personal residence as well as a garage apartment in the back. Mr. Dement has no specific development plans for the property, but he has requested rezoning of both parcels to the CF zone, commercial fringe, so that he can market the property as commercial property. The immediate area, there are commercial uses directly across the street. There's a small commercial node, zoned commercial local directly across the street, across East Main Street, to be more specific, contains a restaurant, a hookah lounge, a hair salon, a Domino's pizza, among other uses. Further to the west along East Main Street is RM sixteen zoning and there are several multifamily developments, including East Main Town Homes and Allen House Apartments. To the northwest, across East Main Street, is university property and directly to the east of the subject property is the East Main Quarters Apartments, which is currently under construction. And to the south and further to the east of the subject property is property zoned RS fifteen, developed with single-family residential uses. If the property were to develop with commercial fringe zoning, type C buffer would be required along the eastern property line abutting the apartment complex that is currently under construction and a type D buffer would be required to be installed along the south property line adjacent to the existing single-family residence to the south. As I mentioned, the applicant has no development plans for the property but would like to market the property as commercial development or as commercial property and he feels like the location is ideal to serve the nearby residents and the faculty and staff of MTSU as well with potential commercial development. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. The planning commission did recommend approval of this request unanimously. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is in the audience representing Mr. Dement, who could not be here tonight.
Any questions?
Mayor, this is a parcel directly across the street from a commercial parcel next to the university, so I think it's compatible with what's existing in the neighborhood, so I'll move for approval.
We'll have a public hearing. We'll have a public hearing.
Can I slide under the desk and hide?
(laughing).
How about this?
Okay.
You'll hear me on the head?
No. All right. Any other questions, relevant questions?
(laughing). I'd suggest we have a public hearing.
Okay. We'll hold a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this, please come to the podium. I know. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15OZ thirty-three, to rezone an area at fifteen oh eight, fifteen twelve, East Main Street to commercial fringe CF district.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for approval on basis on the fact that there's commercial development already across the street and there's residential property being developed right beside it right now, multifamily, that would really be a perfect time to do this, so I move for approval.
Second.
Oh. That's cruel, man. That was cruel. You couldn't be. That was cruel. That's what I deserved.
Absolutely.
This side against that side.
I was gonna say, I saw men appreciate that.
Ms. Wright, we have a motion. Second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Pursuant to Resolution 15OZR thirty-four, adopted by the city council on May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately point six four acres located at forty-one seventeen East Burton Street, forty-one nineteen East Burton Street, and forty, four two seventy East Burton Street for medical residential single-family eight CM RS eight district to general office residential OGR district. Ms. Marion Catrice Dunston, Mr. Rodney W. Graves, and Ms. Teresa Ann Carlton, applicants two thousand fifteen dash four eleven. Notice that said public hearing was published in the June first, two thousand fifteen issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Baughn.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our second public hearing tonight consists of the three parcels that you mentioned, which are located along the north side of East Burton Street and along the west side of Lee Street. This request came to us because of a fire that occurred at a triplex on the middle parcel, which is four nineteen East Burton Street. That triplex was a non-conforming triplex. In the CM RS eight zone, triplexes are not permitted and the applicant, after his, after his triplex burned down and was a total loss, he could not rebuild the triplex in the current CM RS eight zoning. So he came to the planning department very soon after the triplex fire and asked what he could do. He wanted to build the triplex back and he asked what he could do. The planning director looked at the surrounding zoning with the applicant and saw that the property to the north and directly across Lee Street to the east was zoned OGR and the OGR zone permits triplexes as long as the lot meets minimum lot requirements, which this lot does, if it were to be zoned OGR for a triplex. So the applicant has made a rezoning application to rezone his property to OGR, but the planning director indicated to the applicant that if he were going to make the request to rezone his property to OGR, that he wanted the two adjacent property owners to be on board with the request too and to actually file a joint request with him. So all three property owners, and that's why there were three applicants, is because it, three separate applications were filed with all three property owners and all three property owners have, are now co-applicants. What we did not want to have happen was to carve up the zoning in that area, especially with the fact that if the triplex that is on the corner of Lee and Burton, right next to the one that burned down, was to encounter the same fate with, if it were to burn down in the CM RS eight zone, we'd be in the same boat with it not being able to build back. So that is the reason why you see all three properties before you tonight. This, the rezoning will give the property owner, Mr. Graves, in the middle, the opportunity to build his triplex back and should the same thing ever happen to Ms. Carlton on the corner, she would be able to do the same thing under the OGR zoning. In the surrounding area, there are a variety of zoning classifications and land uses. There are single-family residences, but there are also office uses and multifamily residential uses. And as I mentioned, the OGR zone is directly adjacent to the subject property on its north side and across Lee Street as well. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter and recommends approval of the request unanimously. Mr. Graves is in the audience today, if you have any questions for him, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing as well.
Okay, any questions? All right. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15OZ thirty-four, to rezone an area at forty-one, four one seven, four one nine, and forty-two seven East Burton Street to general office residential OGR district.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Now, consider for adoption Resolution 15R sixteen, to provide post-employment benefits, OPUB, for retirees for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Ms. McGinn.
Mayor, and members of the council, this is a resolution that you approve a sim, or presented with each year since the GASP standards required the city to treat the expense that it pays each year for retiree health coverage. That is something which the council decides to do on an annual basis and you've put it in the budget. This resolution is expressing your intent to continue to offer that benefit to employees for the upcoming fiscal year on the terms spelled out in section one, that contains the eligibility standards, and it is on the same cost-sharing basis with the retired employee paying twenty percent and the city paying eighty percent. Section three reflects what those costs are. That's the same as they are for the current fiscal year because there have been no changes in the cost of that health coverage benefit. So this is something you do annually, but because it is a choice that is made each year, it's not a matter of routine, but it is really part of your fiscal year process.
Any questions for Ms. McGinn?
I meant to just to make sure that from a, you know, relative last year to this year, the numbers are primarily the same, I mean primarily the same, right? I mean, there's no-
Yeah, the numbers are the same in terms of what the cost for the employee and the cost for the city is. The amount that is aggregated in terms of the projection has gone up, you know, a little bit. That's projected by our actuary.
Okay. There's no more comments, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll now consider recommendations of the Finance Administrative Service Director of the Murfreesboro City School with regards to the Hobgood Elementary School expansion for gymnasium and classroom addition. Mr. Anderson, it looks like it's some good news.
Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity. As you know, back in February, you approved the architects' fees for, so we could start the design of this addition to Hobgood Elementary School to add another two hundred students. We had the bid opening by Mr. Lynch with Johnson and Bailey and the bid tabulations came in with a low bidder coming in at two hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred dollars less than our original projection, which we were very glad to see. And our low bidder is Biskin, Robert S. Biskin and Company, they are the ones who built overall creek and built the addition at Hobgood before, so we're excited to have them as the low bidder again and all the subs are excellent subs and Mr. Lynch has made the recommendation that we move forward with and accept this bid, so we are here requesting that you accept the bid from Robert S. Biskin to start the construction at Hobgood on the third phase of our additions at Hobgood. Be glad to answer any questions you'd have on that.
Do we think we'll hit, being ready for, I guess, what's the timeline?
By being able to start construction in July, we'll be ready for not this coming school year, but the following school year.
Well, we have a motion on section A.
Yes, because that's approving the award of the contract and the other one is dealing with the financing.
Okay, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 15R twenty-seven, expressing official intent that certain expenditures to be incurred in connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures for construction of Hobgood Elementary Expansion being reimbursed from proceeds of notes, bonds, and other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the city of Murfreesboro.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Dr. Gilbert, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll consider recommendation with regards to a Community Technology Center, or better known as a CTC. I think we have a couple of special speakers here going to come up and present tonight.
First, on behalf of the Lyman Ball Library Board of Directors, I want to thank you for your continued financial support of our public library and its free distribution of information to the citizens of Murfreesboro. We know that this is funded by our tax dollars and our staff does a fabulous job of using those dollars wisely. I'd like to now introduce to you a project the library board has been working on since late two thousand thirteen. During a casual conversation with former Mayor Tommy Bragg, he mentioned a desire he had concerning making technology available to more citizens of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. At this same time, the library board was considering an advanced technology initiative and began researching these needs in our community. Earlier that same year, the U.S. Department of Commerce released information gathered during its most recent current population survey concerning computer and internet use in the United States. This was a very detailed document that included geographies with populations larger than sixty-five thousand people. As a whole, this survey revealed that about one quarter of all households had no paid high-speed internet connection. And I don't want to bore you with statistic after statistic, but I feel that to understand the need in our community is necessary to drill down and report some additional numbers. Department of Commerce further reported that in the South in general, this number increased to about twenty-nine percent. The number increased even more when you considered race, nationality, and education. Households with only a high school education showed a void at approximately thirty-nine percent and those with less than a high school education at an astounding fifty-seven percent. This report also indicated that our specific area showed no statistically significant difference from these averages. We also became aware of a project in San Antonio, Texas, that was solving these same needs of bridging the gap between literacy and technology. Their project is called Bibliotech and is a freestanding bookless library. Their mission statement and vision is, and I'm quoting, "To provide all residents the Their mission statement and vision is, and I'm quoting, "To provide all residents the opportunity to access technology and its applications for the purpose of enhancing education and literacy, promoting reading as recreation, and equipping residents of the community with the necessary tools to thrive as citizens of the 21st century." This sums up exactly the direction we want to be heading, knowing that as citizens of the 21st century, having access to high-speed internet connections has never been more important. We use the internet to complete schoolwork, locate and apply for jobs, watch movies, and other personal recreation, access healthcare information, and to continue relations through social media. This touches all ages, all ethnic backgrounds, all citizens. To develop a plan, and at the advice of our city attorney, Ms. McGannon, the library board asked the citizens in our community to serve on a planning, research, and advisory committee for this project. The members who are serving on this committee are Carlton Miller, representing the Lyman Ball Friends Organization, Councilman Rick LaLance, and Commissioner Charlie Baum, representing the Lyman Ball Library Foundation, County Commissioner Alan McAdoo, Library Director Rita Shacklet, Lyman Ball Systems Administrator Kevin Robertson, and myself, representing the library board. Using the data from the Census Bureau, we began looking at target areas in our community that have the greatest void of internet availability, and began focusing in the area between Main Street and Bradable Pike, determining the most central location being along the Mercury Boulevard corridor. After discussions with our city manager and staff, we approached Dr. Linda Gilbert, Director of City Schools, about the possibility of using a portion of the Hobgood School campus as a future home of what we are currently calling the Community Technology Center as our working project name. Amazingly for us, we were shown the Hobgood Elementary expansion plans and worked closely with Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Gary Anderson to weave our project into those plans. We are very grateful for Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Anderson's time working with us to fit this project into their already completed work. So now I briefly described the what, why, who, and where. The rest is the how and the when. From the beginning, our board planned this to be a combined public-private endeavor. Our board reached out to our foundation and friends organizations, and they together have committed approximately $230,000 to this project. We now need to go out and raise the remaining dollars, targeting local foundations and businesses, along with both the city and county governments, for support. They know we're coming, because we've already approached many of them, and we've received positive responses. But to move forward with them, as well as for grants from the state of Tennessee and other national foundations, we must have a place to call home. We went before the Murfreesboro City School Board about two weeks ago to ask them to go on record in support of this project. We received their unanimous support, and we now come to you requesting that the Lyman Ball Library system be granted a conditional long-term land lease for a portion of the Hobgood campus. The condition would be the ability of our board and the library's auxiliary support groups to raise the required funds to build and equip a facility of between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet that will complement the current and future Hobgood campus. I could go on and on describing how this project will enhance the community through its use as a small business incubator, how we will develop and deliver technology training for our citizens, and especially how we will work with the students, faculty, and families of Hobgood Elementary by opening special hours just for their use. When we open this facility and you come in to observe a typical day, this is what I envision you will see. I believe the mid-morning hours will accommodate citizens researching job opportunities and allow them to apply for those jobs. You will see seasoned citizens working on genealogy research, documenting their own personal history, or just generally continuing as lifelong learners by going online or using databases to learn a new language. Or you will see adults learning English as their second language. They will be connecting to social media sites to see recent pictures of their grandchildren who may live many miles away, or sending updates to relatives somewhere in the world. You will see small groups meeting and discussion groups. Later in the early afternoon, you will see small business owner who has reserved one of the private meeting rooms coming in and connecting their laptop to the available audio-video equipment and conducting business with one of their vendors or their sales force instead of hunkering over a laptop somewhere in a coffee bar. You will see parents who bring their younger children in to learn technology in a children's area with age-specific equipment, or they will come in and check out an e-reader for their child that has preloaded age-appropriate books, or just check out a device to read a digital book or magazine that they've been waiting to read. As the afternoon progresses, you will see middle school and high school students arriving to work on their homework assignments independently or in work groups, again in one of the meeting rooms. Later that evening, there will be a group being taught Windows or Apple's applications in a free class, being taught by an MTSU student, working as an intern, enhancing their own education. As I said earlier, I could go on and on, but it's getting late. So I want to thank you for this opportunity to publicly present this project. I hope I've described the vision of our board and the CTC committee, and ask that you grant the land lease we request, and allow us to come back in the very near future requesting financial support from the city of Murfreesboro. We feel that this is a worthy endeavor that will have a distinct positive impact on the lives of the citizens of Murfreesboro.
Any questions for Mr. Green or Ms. Shacklet? Mr. Green, I think this is an exciting project. I know many of you have been working on this for many years, or a little over a year. And, you know, looking at San Antonio and some of the places that we've talked about, this is something that can be just a benefit, not only for the residents of that area, but the entire community, and reaching out to what really you research and you see libraries now that are transitioning into the, a different age. And this is something, I think, well done on your part, the library board, the foundation, the friends, and all the people that are coming together to help support this.
Thank you.
Mr. Lance?
I just want to make a comment or two that, you know, I've been part of this for the whole, basically the whole time, I guess. And, you know, one of the things I would say after being on the council for years, you certainly get to see things from the other side of the desk. And one thing I want to tell you guys is how much I appreciate how much thought you guys put into this side of the desk in the very early stages. And I guess what I mean by that is, you know, all along, it was always a public-private partnership. They never went into this thing going, well, we're going to go ask the city or the county for all this. We're going to have some skin in the game. So, you know, that is, as we all know, such a huge deal. And I know at one point, I think I read in the literature last night, you know, talking about taking care of the first three years' worth of the kind of operational expenses. I mean, that is a huge deal for, when we look at a project, to be able to get our, to really get a handle on how this thing is going to really succeed or not succeed. I think it's going to succeed, and from a, just from a very different angle, I want to tell you, you know, I mean, I, when they first asked me about this and just started talking to me about it, not as a city council person, not necessarily, but as a board member, is, you know, can you just imagine your kids not have, being able to go home and Google something for a research project, for their homework? I mean, you know, it's, to me, it's such a fitting thing, because, you know, you've had, just think of the progression of libraries, where libraries were around to provide books to people who may not have been able to have books so many years ago, and this is, I mean, you know, the new books are on the screen right here, you know? And so, seems like a perfect progression, and I think it's going to be awesome to give that opportunity, and especially in the way that you've done it from a financial standpoint, and looking at every angle to make it a good thing. So I just really appreciate you guys, and Rita, you're doing awesome stuff.
I echo what you are saying, Mr. LaLance, and as we all know, technology, that's the way of life today. I mean, we're just a technical society. And being on the library board, of course, I'm excited about this also. And I think it's a unique, cities, they come together like a crossword puzzle, you know, for a city to be very vibrant and noted everywhere, and just the camaraderie that we have in our city. I think this is a segment of our city that we are bringing on board that is going to make up the entire city. We are going to see the city just come together. And just like you said, Rick, and Mr. Green, that statistic you talked about, people that don't have the technology in their homes, you know, kids and adults, well, kids especially, they go to school and they have all this equipment, all these computers, laptops, whatnot, and then they go home and they have nothing. So I think this is going to be great. It's going to be another piece that is going to bring Murfreesboro closer together as a community, and I think it's a fabulous idea.
I'll echo what everyone else has said. I think that we're actually looking at the library of the future. I mean, we've already seen the transition taking place of the computers being in the back room, starting to come to the forefront, and the books in the front of the library starting to find that back old computer room. And the transition's already taken place. It's just change. And we've sat here and listened to the 2035 plan tonight, and I think this is probably the library of the future. I think we'll probably continue to see neighborhood-oriented libraries that will probably be going, coinciding with our parks' relationship, looking at neighborhood parks and looking at neighborhood libraries, because that's where we'll have the most use and the most impact. And so I certainly commend you for your efforts to this point. I look forward to seeing success on your project.
Can I ask you, is, are we still in line to be the second standalone facility of this type in the country?
Mr. Lance, as far as I know, the one in San Diego, San Antonio, excuse me, was the first one, and I don't know of any other standalone public libraries that have this. There are, there are some inside other libraries now, but to be a standalone.
We talked about doing progressive stuff in this town, and, you know, adapting and trying to do it the right way, in the smart way. I think this is a great example. I'm going to make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, any of your permits?
There are. We have a new restaurant to be located at 529 North Thompson Lane. That particular location does still lack their building codes inspections, but otherwise they have met our background check requirements. We have a new restaurant and brew house being built at 2455 Medical Center Parkway. It also is lacking the final building codes and inspections, but they have met our background requirements. And then we have a restaurant at 2053 Last Castas Pike. That's an existing location that has not had beer there, and, or they did have beer, very briefly, before a previous location closed. They are ready to issue, so they've met all their requirements, background, as well as their codes. And we would issue those when they finish their codes, once you approve the permit, once they have made their codes inspections complete.
Move for approval, subject staff comments. Which would prove inspections. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have a list of statements in front of you to be paid?
Move for pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
No board and commission appointments? And we have one piece of other business. Ms. McGannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I present to you ordinance 15042. It is my suggestion that you adopt this ordinance on first reading. It would repeal Section 32-1014B of the Murfreesboro City Code, which has contained since 1989 a regulation on the height of handlebars on motorcycles relative to the seat of motorcycles. This issue arose late last week, and it appears that this was initially adopted to be related to a state law. The state law was repealed, and it does not seem to me to be appropriate, since this is something that would be a manufactured distance rather than an aftermarket piece of equipment. It came up, and there appears to be considerable concern about it. As you know, we have a number of motorcycle users and people in the business of selling, and we wanted to allay that concern as quickly as we could. Because it is a single relatively simple issue, I bring it to you in the unusual fashion of other business for first reading. And I should add, as I said in my memos of the public will know, that I have discussed this with the police department, and they today issued a memo requesting that it not be enforced while the council was contemplating this change.
Thank you.
Certainly.
I will say, I think this is a positive move. I know that a lot of the motorcyclists do business in Murfreesboro, and not only that, that we are basically selling motorcycles in Murfreesboro that are built by manufacturers such as Harley-Davidson and Victory Cycles that are actually in violation of our ordinance once they leave the dealership. So I think this is a good idea for us to do this, and we move for passage.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business from staff or city council? Okay, if we don't, are we meeting next week, Mr. Lance?
I believe we may.
Okay. All right, perfect.
Handlebars to hookah bars, we covered it all tonight.
With that, we'll stand adjourned.